Business meeting to order for the city of Montgomery, City Council. This evening we'll begin the invocation by TJ Wilkinson, please.
Well, we come this afternoon with humble hearts and pride out here. We come, thank you to you for the opportunity that you have given us. Prudence and pure mind, God has granted we go forward. Watch over us as we pray, we pray for all those sick and shamed everywhere. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I'd like to also make note, we have a full quorum. Secretary, I pledge allegiance to the United States flag. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the state. First item of business is our visitors and citizens forum. I understand that Philip would like to speak to us this evening. Philip, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. We generally, as a family, try to stay out of city politics. In fact, you know, when it comes to elections, we don't even allow friends to put signs on their, on our property and things like that. And hopefully, I can say what I've got to say without staying, without getting into the politics. But there's recently been a lot of comment with regard to our PD. And a lot of the comment that I've heard of at least seems to be kind of misinformed. So I wondered if you could give me the time to just go over the background of kind of how the PD came around and some of the issues as to how we've handled it. And obviously, whatever the city chooses to do is its business. But I think, you know, it's almost 20 years since we started this PD and it's a good chance to just go over it.
Philip, can you do it in about five minutes or so?
Yeah, I can. I can do it quickly. Don't worry, it won't be, it won't be a thing. So at the time, the city of Montgomery had schools. So it had, it took an hour in the morning for traffic to get through the town to get to schools. Took an hour to get back and then in the afternoon it repeated itself. So there was, at the time, there was sporadic water supplies. They didn't have the well on the north side. And the city was very happy, I think Carol would know better than I would, but I would think he was very happy if in any month, sales tax was much over 50,000. We didn't intend to develop Buffalo Springs, but because of the traffic issues, the county came to us and they said, we are going to condemn a right of way through your property. We don't know where and we don't know when, but one way or another, we're going to do it. So rather than have things indetermined, we proposed that we build the loop and we donate it to the city or the county. And that within it, we do other roads and developments to pay for it. So we agreed to build the loop. We came up with a land plan that was kind of gone over at great length. And the PD was basically contingent from the city's part that we would, one, we had to hand over, we had a 200,000 gallon a day sewer permit. We handed that over to the city, which they didn't need. But we agreed to build roads in the northeast quadrant of the city and put in utilities. So the, since then, obviously, property taxes and sales taxes have increased and the city is now fairly earns a considerable amount of money. Much of that frankly was started off by the PD, in my opinion. So our plans were to do what was called new urbanism, which is where you have cumulative zoning, which we still keep to the city. I don't know if it has it or not, but cumulative zoning is when you can have a business and you can live in it or around it. You can, if you have commercial, you can put residential in the commercial, but you can't put commercial and residential, if that makes sense. So it starts off with the bar of commercial being less attractive than residential. But if, if someone wants to build a residence in a commercial area, they can. And that's what kind of creates a living and working environment. But at the time, the lawyer said, do a PD because in 10 years, they won't remember what was agreed or why it was agreed. So we had an exhaustive period of time where city councilors at the time required specialists to come in and talk to the city. We went line by line over the agreements and it took a significant amount of time to get the PD put down. And so it worries me when people go about saying, oh, it was, nobody heard about how it was done. This was done in the full presence of everybody who wanted to attend in the city. It was done after consultants were required to come in. The consultants actually agreed with what we wanted to do. And so it wasn't an agreement that just snuck in the back door or that people didn't read or didn't know about. It was exhaustively talked about. What, what has the PD done for us so far? We kind of gave you the water well site. I don't mean to brag this, but I need to cover it. We, we, I was on the water board and it was with Burley, Randy Burley and Bill Parker. We weren't happy with the potential that the city would sign up with SJRA. I knew Ken Canatza, who was the April Sound Mud 3 and 4 operator. So I went over and we kind of negotiated the potential of a memorandum of understanding. And from there, the city took it over and councilors voted in favor. And again, PD is largely to me instrumental in Montgomery staying clear of the San Jacinto RPG. We've got memory parks that has come about, rotaries largely to thank for that, but that's our property, the library, that's our property. Fernland, again, kind of something we pushed through. Sam Houston University was originally going to sell those buildings to actually to the woodlands to put down on the San Jacinto River. And we kind of persuaded them to do a deal with the city of Montgomery. So, and even golf carts, that's an ordinance that we helped push through. So there are a lot of things hopefully that have been good from the PD. If you look around where the people are complaining about apartments and things like that, most of the PD is still grass and cows. And that's a kind of a price we have to pay because there are really only two ways that we can control what goes on our land. One is, one is by not selling to people who we are, who don't think are going to do a good job. And that's not always easy to do because properties change hands subsequently. And the other is to have architectural control. And there we do have still a limited amount of power with architectural control. But in the overall picture of things, if a property, if a property is zoned, whether by us or subsequently, or more importantly, by the city, it's very hard to discriminate. You can't discriminate nor should you discriminate on the base of race, religion, or any of those things. So to me, the discussion about whether apartments or condominiums, one is better than the other. To me, I'm not sure, you know, we certainly, I don't feel we can dictate what people do on a property that's already eligible to do it. The only control we have, once it gets past us, and again, McCoys, they tried to come on our land for five years and we wouldn't sell to them. I regret that because I think McCoys is actually a good product. But there are a number of other products that are out there that you'll notice are to the east of the city. Most of those or a lot of those are ones we wouldn't sell land to because we felt that it wasn't in keeping with what we wanted to see. So it's kind of a price that we pay. The first we saw of those apartments, which again, was nothing, that was land we had sold a long time ago, was when they came to us to get some drainage easement. And we realized that they were building hardy board apartments. So we exercised our architectural control. And in that area, we only have an architectural control of a wainscot. So the only thing we could make them do is put a wainscot. But beyond that, that there was nothing we could do either. So it's difficult to control things and it's very difficult to predict 20 years ahead. We, for our subdivision, we're doing, and Jeff Widdell will hopefully like this, but the first section of Town Creek Crossing, we've mandated 70% masonry. And so everything in that area and including across the street, with anything we can control will be 70% masonry. I don't personally like hardy board, but you've got to be very careful because as a good example, Grace Point, I think, is planning to come in on the west side of the city. They do hardy board buildings that are really, really nice. And so it's very hard to just blanketly say all, no metal, no wood, all wood. It's something that's kind of subjective and it's something that changes with time. So I guess I'm pushing through this as quickly as I can. So as an example, we're flexible, Town Creek Crossing, Section 2. We didn't, Section 1, we didn't have any trees really to push down. Section 2 is all trees and Jeff Widdell rightly got on me. He didn't want to see lots of tiny lots there. We got the city to agree to 100 lots in Section 2. When I saw how much dirt had to be moved, we've sat back and our Section 2 will be three quarter acre lots. And we, so we won't have to come through and cut every tree and so on. We'll make the people, builders will build pads on each lot as they go and we can protect it. So there is a certain amount of self policing as we go. But it kind of frustrates me that we, we seem to be coming under criticism for the PD when in fact, to me, the PD is what has largely helped the city be what it is. And we seem to be the strictest, again, we've had many opportunities to sell to apartments. We've not taken them. Down the line, there will be apartments. As a good example, just a couple of days ago, two Tracos and two big heavy dump trucks showed up across on the east side of Buffalo Springs Drive. That's land that was sold to a very respectable developer. And hopefully, he will do something that's good. But there's no way, other than architectural control, I can tell him what to build or where to build or how to build. So it's very hard as we go to keep a control of, is not just the PD, but it's hard for you guys to keep control of the city because things always change. Demand can be different. The demand and thoughts now versus 2003, when we started, significantly different. And the people here that have moved in, by and large, don't know any of the history of how we got some of these things. So I just wanted to take more than I should, more time than I should, I guess, to just say that hopefully, when the city looks at how we're doing the PD, that, I mean, hopefully, I think they should be proud of what we've done. Who else is dumb enough to keep cows on land 20 years after they started developing? So anyway, there's my little piece and I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Philip, appreciate it. You know, in this forum, in this format, we cannot respond back.
Oh, I know, I know. In fact, I'm going to turn my computer off. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the first set of agenda items on your agenda is the consent agenda. Item number one, matters related to the approval of minutes of the March 23, 2021 regular meeting. Item number two, consideration of possible action regarding completion of the one year warranty period for the Emma's Way Extension Project. Counsel, you can take this individually or all together. What was your pleasure?
I make a motion that we take it all together.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
As we said, that we consider these both all together. This motion is debatable, amendable, or requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda altogether, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the consent agenda altogether.
That's a cute helper in the background.
I'm sorry?
So I thought I was on mute. So that's a cute helper in the background.
Consideration of possible action, number three. Consideration of possible action regarding renewal of the lease agreement with Virginia Adams for the property located at the northeast corner of SH 105 and FM 149.
This is property that the city has leased since 2013. And the two primary purposes for use are the city's LED sign at the corner, at the intersection, and overflow parking and vendor space during festivals on the northern portion of the land. The proposed lease terms are the same as the current lease terms. The rent is made of two parts, that the city makes payment of the annual ad valorem taxes and an additional annual rent fee. The additional annual rent fee first was $1,000 in the initial lease and increased to $2,500 in the second, and the second version of the lease and the current lease. The proposed lease, you know, retains that $2,500 rent fee as the second fee. The initial term of the initial lease was for five years. The second lease that is now coming up for expiration was a three year term. And we're proposing to renew the lease with an additional three year term. It's important to note that in order to leave the city's LED sign in the current location, the lease needs to be renewed. And so this is put forth for the council to discuss and consider as you see fit. Staff does recommend approval of the, of the lease as it's submitted to you.
I'd like to make the motion to renew the lease agreement for three years with Virginia Adams for the property located at the northeast corner of State Highway 105 and Farm to Market Road 149.
Second.
As we said, that we renew the three year lease agreement with Virginia Adams for the property located northeast corner of SH 105 and FM 149. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the renewal for the three year lease agreement with Virginia Adams, the property located northeast corner of SH 105 and FM 149, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the renewal for the three year lease agreement with Virginia Adams to the property located northeast corner of SH 105 and FM 149. The next item of business on your agenda is item number four. Consideration of possible action regarding a building permit plan fee, review fee exemption for Summit Universal LP.
In 2014, the developer of the Summit Business Park requested an exemption for the plan review fees for their development. At that time, the city council considered the matter, granted the request. The details of that can be found in the paperwork that has been attached to this item. The development plans called for a total of 17 buildings, including three building designs. There were eight identical office buildings type A, five identical office warehouse buildings type B, and four identical office warehouse buildings type C that were in those plans. The developer proposed to pay the adopted plan review fees for the first of each building type and then was to be charged the actual cost for the remaining 14 buildings. The premise of the request was that the development would be built in a rapid timeline and the city building official would not need to conduct thorough review of each building since they were identical to the recent submittal that was presented to the city at that time. Currently, in 2021, the development is approximately 50% built out. As an additional factor, the city updated its building codes in 2019. So the extended build out timeline of the development, coupled with updated building codes, has created a situation where staff cannot adhere to both the adopted city building codes and the plan review fee exemption granted by city council seven years ago in 2014. This is the only developer that such an exemption for building permit and plan review fees has been granted in the city. Staff recommends that council rescind the, this exception that was originally provided to Summit Universal LP to allow for equal application for the city regulations and a level playing field for all builders and developers in the city. Yeah. And in this way, the city will have, will, will be applying the regular city regulations and permitting process for this item.
Are there any legal ramifications to withdrawing this, Richard?
Unless Alan wants to chime in with anything that I, that we hadn't considered here at a staff level, you know, anything that's, you know, created by council, you know, can be changed by council. In this particular case, you know, both the, the spirit of this original item was that everything was going to be done quickly. And that was seven years ago. And here we are, seven years later, halfway built out. You know, my thought is, is, you know, I, we don't want to be in a position where we're continuing to try to apply a standard set in 2014 where other items have changed. And this, if this takes another seven years to build out, we're in 2028.
And we certainly have changed circumstances as a result of that that justify action by council as you desire.
Is it typical that developers like this, it gets grandfathered in? Or is it typical for them to bring it back in front of the current council years later and ask for the exemption or just adhere to the ordinance?
Well, because they were granted an exemption, it would be typical for council to take action to rescind it. It wouldn't be an item that they would normally come back to.
So this is atypical, them coming back, asking for the exemption.
Well.
Mayor, if I could just.
I'm just trying to understand what normal protocol.
Sure, they've not come back to ask for the exemption just in, in the application of the building permit fees and the, and the review of their building plans. On a staff level, we just realized that it's, that the issues that, that go along with trying to adhere to and a reduced amount for the plan review fee and to actually get the building, you know, permits properly reviewed and permitted. So they've not come back for this. This is, this item is brought to, by the staff to ask for either an affirmation or a rescension of this exemption that we granted them back in 2014. We don't feel like we have at a staff level, the ability to say this no longer applies. That would need the council action to say, no, this no longer applies.
For the clarification.
You know, in all fairness, I think that, well, I'm going to make a motion that we rescind the exemption for Summit Universal LP to allow for equal application of city regulations in a level playing field for all builders and developers in the city. Because I think if we were to continue this, it would set a precedent.
My second.
As we said, that we, that we, I'm sorry, I'm reading this. That we rescind the plan review for the fee exemption for Summit Universal Park and allow for even playing field for all developers in the city. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It's now open for discussion. All those in favor of rescinding the plan review fee exemption for Summit Universal Business Park so that all developers in the city have the same opportunity, say aye. As opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will rescind the plan review fee exemption for Summit Universal LP. Next item of business on your agenda is item number five. Update regarding the city engineer. Richard?
Thank you. Approximately two and a half months ago, I provided city council with my recommendation from the city engineering RFQ process, which was to continue utilizing the services of Jones Carter as city engineer. As I explained to city council at that time, one of the primary factors was the volume of institutional knowledge and experience in the hands of the engineers handling the city's items with the city systems, you know, for those two that were assigned to the city. Last week, I was notified that both of these engineers were resigning their positions from Jones Carter and accepting positions with another firm. My planned course of action, you know, to keep the city council updated is right now, in the last two, or since that time, in the last two weeks, we had multiple meetings, we had the two significant meetings here with Jones Carter Engineering, as they're advising the city staff how they would continue to provide the engineering services to the city and keep everything running from operations items, you know, construction items, review items and such, all the way through. I would also, I also plan to interview the firm WGA Consulting to see if that would be a better path to the city because that's where some of our institutional knowledge has gone. And if neither of them may be the, being the best path forward for the city, I also have the ability to review the recently interviewed firms and deciding which is the best direction overall to recommend counsel in moving forward. But I wanted to get input from the city council before I started moving in any of these directions. And if you had questions, make sure we could try to answer those for you. So I'm not looking for any specific action from the council tonight, but I did want to see if there are any questions or take any input from city council on the side of it this time.
If I recall, you saying, you said WGA is a new firm to handle civil engineering, correct?
That's partially true and partially not. WGA is not a new firm. They've been around for a while. They're, they're in the process of opening up an office, a new office to do municipal type work, such as what we have. I intercept, I've intersected them in the past, you know, doing this kind of work, but they've not had a local office and it's not been their primary focus, as I understand it.
I guess my only concern is, are they going to be of capability to handle? Even though the two engineers went there, are they going to be of the large enough company to handle what the city needs with the growth and the infrastructure needs that we have right now?
That firm having the resources to do that work is certainly my top concern with them. But it's not one I can really get answered until I, you know, engage them in significant conversation. And I didn't want to have that conversation without letting city council know I was planning to have it.
Richard, what other firms would you interview besides these guys? Do you have anything in mind?
At, at this point, if, if, and I'm not saying, the final recommendation I would bring back would or won't be Jones and Carter or would and won't be WGA. I don't know until I've had these conversations. But if I would go, you know, you know, take the step back and determine that I don't think either of these is the best option for the city. You know, I have discussed with the city attorney, the, the recent interviews we did with several other engineering firms, you know, were recent enough that I could pull back into those firms and base the recommendation on those interviews or choose to review any of those firms based on the changing situation. And so we still have all of that information. And during this, during the last week, several of those firms have contacted me to let me know they would be, they would still be interested, you know, should that opportunity arise for those firms.
Okay, what kind of agreement do we have with Jones and Carter? Is it just an annual or is it an evergreen or what?
Well, in, back in January, we took no additional action, other than to continue doing what we're doing. The contract we have with them, I believe, has a, it's a seven day cancellation clause. And it's typical for firms like this, you know, to work with their entities if there is going to be a change in place. And so, you know, I would expect if that were to be the direction, would ultimately to be, to move away from Jones Carter, they would be very professional in doing that.
Okay.
To clarify, our choices are, we either lose Jones and, we keep Jones and Carter and we get brand new staff who don't necessarily know exactly what's going on with the city. We move to WGA, which we keep our existing engineers, but we may not be able to have a large enough company to accommodate our growth and our needs. Or we shuffle the pot altogether and we have a spaghetti bowl.
I.
All of those are possible, but it's not necessarily limited to just those options.
Okay. And until we hear from WGA, and I, you may be just assuming, I don't know what they have. I've not run across them before. So I think it's good that we'll hear what they have to offer.
Primarily, I want to counsel to know that, you know, I'm trying to look out for how I see the best interest of the city and bring that recommendation back to city council, that we don't have to just be, be sitting here while all those, the personnel that handles our account change, without at least considering that we have options. It may well be that Jones Carter is the best choice without talking and looking at other options. I don't know the answer to that. I'm not trying to imply that I'm specifically planning to move one direction or another because I just don't know the answers to those questions just yet. This is a new and developing situation. Jones and Carter certainly has a lot of resources available as a larger company. But again, you know, I wanted to advise city council that I might be having these conversations before I actually had them and you find out about them, you know, as things are ongoing. I wanted to keep city council as informed as possible on this. But for the time being, you know, the city engineer remains the firm Jones Carter and they have a plan in place to continue providing the services that the city needs. And we're working with them as best possible to see that that gets done.
Can I see update, Richard?
Uh, I'm sorry, Kevin.
I said, thanks for the update, sir.
Thank you.
Who is your contact at Jones and Carter, Richard?
Uh, right now I'm dealing with at Jones Carter with Eric Peterson. And he is uh the vice president of municipal and district services there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else, counsel?
There's no action right on this.
That's right. That's right. Just make a all right, then the next item uh is executive session and we have nothing in executive session. So uh, the next item is council inquiry. Um, I do have a count something to speak about if no one else wants to go first. All right. Uh, counsel today, while I was watching uh Commissioner's Court, Jason Millsaps, he is the executive director of Homeland Security. Gave an update in regards to the city of Montgomery. So that I don't mislead anyone or misspeak, I'd like to play for you what he said about the city. I'll be sharing my screen, so let me allow me to do so.
Now, who is this again?
Jason Millsaps, the executive director of Homeland Security. He reports to Judge Kio.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Item C is a late request. I I had a uh city come to come to me right after the first of the year, the new year. And uh, they had failed to uh respond to our request last year to have funds that they expended out of local funds for COVID related.
Yeah, it looks like the internet stopped, of course. Let's go ahead and try this again. Are y'all there? Okay, I just want to make sure that I was still live. Okay, well, uh, with that, uh, I will encourage everyone to go and look at what on the county website, what uh Jason I don't understand what happened here, what Jason said.
You're sharing the screen now, mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Emergency management, consider discussing.
Um, yeah, I want to be right.
For the new year and uh they had failed to respond to our request last year to have funds that they expended out of local funds for COVID related expenses reimbursed by the CARES Act last year. Um, it was a glitch. We we showed them where we had sent the request to them two times. Unfortunately, the the elected official we sent that to had an email system that was not functioning and they did not get that message. Um, so after that request came in, got with the auditor and and the auditor and I uh agreed not to spend any time auditing those receipts and expenditures that they turned into us until the court decided whether we were going to honor that late request and reimburse them or not. So if we were to honor it and reimburse them, uh, it's the city of Montgomery and their request in aggregate without any auditing and reductions due to non allowable expenses is about seventy five thousand dollars. Um, just at my glance at some of the expenditures, it would not be allowed, not all of them. So I'm confident that if the court approved, that number would come in under seventy five K. However, if if you do not want to uh participate, I I would inform the city that at this time they're not eligible for reimbursement.
I make a motion that we reject their request.
One, one we do on other cities. We we reimbursed every, we had two cities that did not participate in that, and that was the city of Willis, the city of Montgomery. Um, we otherwise, we reimbursed everyone's allowable expenses under the CARES Act.
Willis. How many cities are in that situation right now?
So it was, it included Conroe, Patton Village, Wood Branch, uh, Magnolia.
That we reimbursed.
Even the Woodlands Township, which is in a city, was included in that uh yeah, city of Cut and Shoot. Everyone was allowed to participate. Most of them had little bit, little expenses.
Why don't we audit what you've got, then bring this back, see whether we want to approve or not?
I can do that. I mean, that even if if you want to entertain that, I just as as the auditor's office, it's a lot of work to go through that. I understand. But I mean, again, if you're, if you're.
Okay. I'm gonna stop sharing at that point. So they chose to table it, but what I wanted, after learning of these two alleged emails that supposedly were sent to an elected official, I did see I asked for a request and received information uh today, a stack of emails and after going through these uh, it is claimed by uh Megan Arthur that an email was sent to me from a woman named Karen on ten sixteen twenty twenty at nine fifteen A M. And I have no such email. I have looked in my trash. I have looked in my inbox. I have looked everywhere. I don't have such an email. And then again, uh, the second email she claims um at ten twenty two twenty twenty at nine forty six A M from Megan Arthur, I still don't have that email as well. I've checked with everyone at City Hall, uh, Richard, Susan and Anthony, and uh they don't have these emails also. So to me, to my knowledge, um, no one received these emails. Uh, she stated she sent them to s countryman at C I dot Montgomery dot T X dot U S for the record. Um, if Jason, Megan and Karen happen to see this video, I'd love for them to go ahead and they've got a copy of those emails that were sent and timestamped uh those times. I would appreciate if you'd send those along. I'm I'm not aware of any glitch during my term as mayor, nor have I, I anticipated glitch other than that video. Um, but I've not received, I've always received emails. Um, I've never been uh in a situation to where someone say that they sent me an email to my proper email address and not received the email. Secondly, uh, based on my communication uh with the city, Richard Trammann, um, Anthony Lasky, uh, the city of Montgomery only submitted uh funds for approximately sixteen thousand dollars for the COVID reimbursement. Um, that's a far cry from the seventy five thousand that Mr. Millsaps spoke of. And I'd like a copy of his figures, which I will be getting, I will be making a records request um immediately to his office to see what records were sent to him and where he came up with this seventy five thousand dollars. Um, it's also apparent too that his record keeping skills um are not his strong suit um when looking at going back at emails and looking at the communications. So uh, should the records request that um I submit and they they give back to me uh, do not support the seventy five thousand dollars that he has stated. Um, I will be asking for uh an apology at the next commissioner's court because this is misleading information and untrue. Now, lastly, moving forward, I'm I'm gonna ask Richard, Anthony, Susan, anyone at the uh at City Hall uh to include myself as well as the mayor pro temp, T J Wilkerson to any and all emails between the city and county regarding city business and especially when it comes to money and funds. I think this is a great example of uh uh, an opportunity to ensure that all eyes are on such situations and should we ever be available or um have an opportunity for federal funds or payback funds, I want to make sure we've got several eyes on all of this. So for the record, uh, this city is run efficiently, effectively, and it's for the benefit of our residents. And for someone to say that, to say that is anything but that is offensive and 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 I would like to have proof. So uh, I will report back to you, council members. Uh, when I receive the records request of what I find, that would be the end of uh my council inquiry. Does anyone else have anything?
Is is there, is there a possibility to um appeal their their decision on that? Or are we just going to get more research right now?
It's not over, Kevin.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And if you look at the video, it starts at five minutes and fifty five seconds at Commissioner's Court.
We lost her.
Oh. Yep.
She'll be there.
Sir, have you had any conversations with Willis since they seem to be in the same boat?
Through the city's defense, we looked hard at what we submitted to ensure it was proper. And within line and accordance. All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to
I can make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Secondly, adjourn this meeting. That motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and it is six forty P M. We will adjourn. Thank you very much, counsel. Have a great day.
Have a good night. Bye bye.
Good night.
Bye.